Okay, good morning. Welcome to the September 26, 2011 Des Moines City Council Workshop. This morning, we're going to start with responses to the previous council workshop questions. Rick?
Thank you, Mayor Protim Meyer. There were several questions having to do with the Easter Lake watershed management. Question number one, no tree plantings are recommended to reduce runoff and enhance water quality. Why is that? Actually, the watershed management plan has not yet been developed. Tree plantings would be included as part of that plan when it is developed. The next question had to do with bank erosion. The question essentially was how come so much of the bank erosion comes from the stream banks? The response indicates that stream bank erosion comes from different factors. It's noted the stream channelization, watersheds with large fractions of impervious cover. In other words, the watershed has a lot of hard surface, the kind of soil makeup along the stream bed, and the high peak flow in tributaries. And it's also noted that the upland portions of the watershed were developed some time ago and are relatively stabilized, so most of the erosion is coming from the stream banks for the reasons that are articulated here. Is there any recourse for property owners who do not build their sediment retention can cost be charged to them for dredging the lake? With respect to the second question, we're indicating that most of the regulations in this regard were put in effect in 2005. These areas were developed to a large extent before 2005, so the judgment is that we can't really go against those property owners for the most part, too, in order to pay for the dredging of the lake. But with respect to the first part, is there any recourse against property owners? Yes, there are different enforcement measures. We've identified some here. Administrative penalties to stop work, notice of abatement, assessment of cost for cleanup, those are all options if property owners do not put in the proper sediment retention. Then your last question had to do with median household income, and we've attached a table. The short answer is the median, 100% median income for a family of four in Des Moines. According to HUD's standards is $74,500 hours, and you can see the other data for other family sizes as well there. Mr. Mayor Protim, that's the questions and answers I'd be happy to answer and the additional questions that might be.
Any other questions for Rick? Thank you, Rick. Next up is the NDC Neighborhood Development Corporation Annual Report. Heidi, Matt, who's doing it? Matt?
Good morning. Matt Anderson, I'm the board treasurer for NDC. With us today, we have a few board members I want to point out quickly. Matt Marsh, who's our board president, he's with Iowa State Bank. Jake Christensen, Vice President with Terrace. And Nadine Hogate. And Brian Meyer, our newest board member. Thank you for having us today. I've been on the NDC Board for probably seven or eight years, and I take a lot of pride in the work that NDC does. We wear a lot of different hats. First and foremost, we're a real estate development company. And as you well know, this has been, the last couple of years have been really tough times for real estate development companies, but NDC has weathered this well. We've used this time to complete a couple of our multi-phase development projects and really focusing on strengthening some of our partnerships in this down economy. Our partnerships with the city, the neighborhoods, our lenders, and most really other nonprofit organizations has really never been stronger. I think the future for NDC is very bright. As we start to see some rebound in the economy, and we start to look at new projects and what we want to do as a development company, we've set our sights finally south of the river, going into Mr. Meyer's Ward with a project we're planning at Southeast 6th and Hartford, a mixed-use development project. Heidi will share some of that with you. One of the struggles that we had as we started looking at that project was the duration of our 2080 agreement with the city. There's another year left, another one-year funding commitment from the city. And lenders who are even established, larger for-profit development companies are having difficulties financing projects, we as a nonprofit with one more year of funding left have had that question coming up more and more. So as we present our annual report today, one of the things that we're asking for as a board is that you please consider an early renewal of that 2080 agreement. We've typically done it in five-year stretches. What we need to do is we go to our lenders with these great projects, they like the projects, but they're looking at NDC and saying, "Well, are you going to get another funding commitment from the city?" And that's been a struggle as Heidi goes around and talks to the bankers. So that's one of the things we're here to talk about with you also today, and we've had some dialogue with the City Manager's Office about that.
Question, the funding for NDC versus NFC, are they on parallel tracks, or is there a different timing schedule?
Mrs. Hensley, councilmembers, they're each, if I recall, multi-year contracts or 2080 agreements are each about $1 million a year. I think the NDC agreement's coming up next in 2012, and the council would have an opportunity. What Matt is suggesting is that you consider extending that agreement, you know, sooner rather than later. And I would suggest that that's an appropriate consideration. You want to take a look at that. It is a capital budget item. You do allocate funds in your capital budget, at least you have in the past, and that would be a decision before you again here, really, in a couple of months as you do that budget. So that would be an appropriate time to take a look at that. There's really not a huge problem in making that advance agreement, but it does bind you, once you've done that, to those fairly significant contributions.
Okay. If there's no more questions for me, I'll turn it over to our Executive Director, Heidi Wessels.
Thank you. Thank you for having us this morning. And thank you, Matt, and also our board members for joining us this morning. Just a brief review of our mission. We started out in 1999. Our mission has remained unchanged, to enhance neighborhoods and combat community deterioration through redevelopment efforts designed to create opportunities for housing, small businesses, and jobs for the residents of Polk County, Iowa. Just an overview, these are some of the neighborhoods that we've done development in, and I'll quickly move through some slides to show us, to show all of you this morning where we've been, and then I'll focus in on where we're going. These are some of the neighborhoods that we've done development in, not only development of our own, but also have been a contributor to other development efforts. So not only can we develop projects on our own, but we can utilize a portion of our funds in order to work with other developers. Once again, 6th Avenue, we've been on 6th Avenue quite a bit. This was our first project there. Second project on 6th Avenue, a little bit further down on 6th and College. That was the second phase of that project there on the right-hand side. Then, as probably most of you are familiar with, and probably our largest stretch of development between the corner of East 15th and East 16th on East Grand Avenue.
Heidi, in all these pictures that you're showing us, what's the occupancy? Is there any vacancy?
And I'll show you that in an upcoming slide. Right now, we've been very fortunate in that about 92% of our buildings are full. All of the properties on 6th Avenue are full. The second portion of the question I always get, are they paying tenants? Yes, they are. I'm happy to report that we have very few outstanding receivables from tenants. The reason that works, and very few turnover, how that happens is that NDC staff, we work a lot with our tenants, and we also work with the neighborhood groups to identify how their businesses are doing. Are there any issues that they're having? How we can support them, not financially, but connecting them with other nonprofits or for-profits in the greater Des Moines area so that their businesses can continue to flourish. So we're very fortunate in that, but it has taken a large amount of effort to get there. Continuing on, on East Grand. That was kind of where we left off. This is our last large building, and that completed the East Grand development. We had just finished up, and a new restaurant opened in that development last year. So we completed the renovations to the interior space there on East Grand. Prior to that, we started looking at where's our next development area. And this is where we started to focus. One of the things that we noted, we had done a lot of work in the north, Des Moines north. We took a lot of, we worked hard on Forest Avenue in the west. We've certainly done work on the east, but we realized, and with the neighborhood and the neighborhoods, some of the more transitional neighborhoods that we wanted to take a look at on the south side. So our Board of Directors, and we go through a strategic planning process about once every two years to figure out where we are and where we want to go. And that is probably more frequently than other organizations, but being a real estate development company, things change pretty swiftly, so we have to be pretty fluid in what we do. We started focusing in on the south side. What you're looking at right now is a parcel of land between, it's actually 1938 Southeast 6th Street, between East Hartford and East Hillside on East 6th, Southeast 6th. A landmark that many of you are familiar with would be the B&amp;B Grocery, and it's in that neighborhood. We started land acquisition earlier this year in March, finalized that about May. And before we started getting down to any kind of design, we started working with the neighborhood associations in that neighborhood. There are two neighborhood associations that are tied in there and started discussing our, who we are, what we do, and started gathering input. We knew there needed to be a zoning change there, and we completed that neighborhood pedestrian commercial zoning change just about a month ago. So we are in the process now of submitting finalized site plans and moving forward with our design there.
Are the neighborhood associations supportive, then?
Yes. Actually, it took some time. We spent quite a bit of time explaining who we are, what we do. Our history really helped, and your support, obviously, with the City of Des Moines helped. The area sees a lot of businesses come in and come out, and there are significant number of businesses. It used to be a very thriving commercial district there, a mixed-use district many years ago. But if you look at the radius of that area, there's not a whole lot of commercial left there. There is a considerable size of senior living center there. We took a look at that and thought that would be a strong base for commercial. But really, wanted to talk to them about the trust factor, who we were, what kind of projects we developed, that we weren't going to put in pawn stores or payday loan stores. A lot of the neighborhoods that we see, that's where a lot of the interest lies from the outside market, and so we work really hard. They took a good look at who we were as an organization and really drove by our projects. And so through pretty strong collaboration and really just sitting down and talking to people one-on-one, we had five public meetings and just basic phone calls. We were happy to support when they came before you at City Council or Planning and Zoning. They were in support of that, and we will continue to work with them as our project progresses.
Heidi, I might say that I've been to a number of the meetings when you guys have made your presentations, and they're well-received. You have been very amenable to answer or get answers to anybody and everybody's questions, and I think it was well-received and appreciated by all those neighborhoods. So keep up the good work.
Thank you. This project will be very similar to ones that we've done in the past in that there will be a small residential component, so there will be a lower-level commercial, about 5,000 square feet, and then the upper-level component will be of residential, of a residential nature. One of the things that we're starting to see a strong trend in, especially in our developments, is that our residential cash flows are commercial. And there's a number of reasons for that. And there's, I've done a lot of work with, taken a look at a project in Renaissance Rock Island, and some of the things that are going on in Rock Island there, and it seems to be a trend in redeveloping some of the distressed areas. This project also, we're working very hard to develop it very sustainably. And so we've been working very diligently with traffic and transportation and community planning and understanding how we might continue to be very cognizant of heating, cooling, energy, and just being a good developer as far as that's concerned. Just kind of an overview of what our board and what we are very proud of, given the financial nature of our economy that we're dealing with, we really, and Matt highlighted it earlier, we collaborate. We're very, we don't try to do what other people are currently doing. It's not a good, it's, there are other great people that we collaborate with when we go into a development area. We work very hard with the City of Des Moines and Community Development so that we're all operating on the same path. We take a look at other developers in the area, Anowem, The Hatch, Jack Hatch, taking a look at what are their intent in some of these neighborhoods and how we might be able to help. Forest Avenue is a good example of what's going on. We have a couple of parcels there, and we're working with two developers there in order to help further the development along Forest Avenue. As I pointed out earlier, 90% of, we have 90% occupancy within all of our current holdings. Very little turnover in our tenant base, and very few outstanding receivables. Our tenants include 19 locally-owned businesses. What I will say about our tenants, it's not outside, people coming from outside of the state. The tenants that we have in these neighborhoods are from the neighborhoods. They want to invest in their neighborhoods. They want to provide jobs in their neighborhoods. So we don't typically see a whole lot of outside fast food or outside chains coming in, and that's wonderful for us. We also help the neighborhood-based service delivery, which has been quite advantageous for us. They do house in our 6th Avenue, 6th and Forest property. They call that a base there. And we also have the Des Moines Community Services at one of our buildings on 6th and College. We do have increased outside interest in our project areas. You know, one of the major reasons that we are in existence, we go into areas that aren't typically attractive to maybe other developers. In order to raise the tax base, heighten the profile of those areas, and really make it attractive so that other people will come in and want to develop there. It was a loss for us. We lost one of our tenants at the East Grand Development, but he bought the old Raoul's building, and he renovated the old Raoul's building and now has, I think he has got a radio station there and also diversity insurance there. So it was great to see somebody come in and renovate that building because it certainly wasn't ISO or there. So that was a small success, but a success still because it showed that that area is going to continue to have outside interest. We have very strong relationships with agencies that complement our mission. The City of Des Moines Community Development, we work with the Small Business Administration and Terry Vorebrick in your office. We work closely with Terry. We work with Anowem, and we also work for Iowans for Social and Economic Development. I do a lot of talking at their small business classes there, and actually, people that have gone through the business classes with ISED, we do have tenants that ultimately become our tenants out of the ISED programs. Public recognition and community presence, you know, we probably don't do as much as we should to go out and toot our own horn, but I was happy to get the call last week that we were, we will be given award for the Community Partner Award from the Iowa Black Business Summit that's coming up here in October. And actually, one of our tenants is going to be given the New Entrepreneur Award at that summit as well. I sit on the 6th Avenue Corridor Board of Directors, the Corporation for Economic Development Board of Directors. As Mayor County mentioned, we do have a strong relationship with neighborhood associations, and that is ongoing. We don't develop that relationship at the beginning when we go into a neighborhood and then leave it. That is an ongoing. Our mission is ongoing in those neighborhoods. And one of the reasons, and City Manager Clark and I had a discussion last week, if we came in and did what we did and immediately sold the property, we fear that there's a longer stability time that needs to happen there. So we keep in touch with all the neighborhood associations and make sure that our work there continues on and tries to address any issues. We are financially strong. I'm fortunate to have a very well-rounded Board of Directors that not only I watch the finances, they watch the finances, the City of Des Moines watches the finances with our annual auditing process. And we have high accountability from our Board of Directors and city staff. I'm actually, just so you know how your contribution helps us, or how we're looked at outwardly, I'm contacted a lot from universities and outside experts around the nation. They consider us a case study for what is good. We are unusual. Typically, you don't see a nonprofit commercial development entity doing what we do. So I'm often contacted and actually talk a lot at Iowa State University, just talked to somebody from University of Minnesota to talk about what we do, why we do it, and what our outcomes are. So that's something that you all can be very proud of. Once again, City of Des Moines, you do some pretty amazing, amazing things. And once again, just taking a look at where we've been and where we're going. One thing I do want to clarify is that we do pay property taxes. We are a nonprofit organization, but all of our parcels and all of our properties are tax-paying entities. So right now, we pay property taxes of over $100,000 annually.
Heidi, you know what would be helpful is, what was the assessed value of the properties before, maybe that's in here, I don't know, but I think-
It isn't, but I would be happy to get that to you as follow-up.
Because I'm sure it's significant.
It is significant. And you know, as we've, you know, we've gone through some tax abatement programs when we first construct, but now they're all starting to roll off. So I will take a look at that information and compile it and get it to you. Challenges, and Matt mentioned a few of these, refinancing. Most of our projects, several of our projects are on long-term mortgages. And we did have three come up last year for refinancing. That was difficult, to say the least, but we did find a local bank that would assist us in financing. However, as most people would expect, there are additional collateral items that we had to put down. We had to cross-collateralize our developments. We had to put additional funds into a CD in order to carry that. The uncertainty of future funding certainly relates to our 2080 agreement and our duration. We have seen our business model evolved. Residential, we're not looking for residential subsidy at all now. We feel that we're strongly able to rent those at market rate. And being able to rent those at market rate does subsidize the commercial.
What's the percentage of the city's funds in your overall revenue?
All of our city, the city funds in our revenue?
So your revenue is, city makes up half of it? 75%?
We, as far as our development's cash flowing-
Correct.
Our development's cash flow, with the exception of about $95,000. So we're-
Which is seed money, I think-
Our seed money.
-money is coming entirely-
It's 100%?
100%. 100%.
Which is a point, maybe, where you were heading is they go to the future, that may be something that they're going to look at diversifying-
Correct. Funding sources in there?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Small business loans and opportunities for emerging businesses, they're not available to our typical tenant, and what I'm starting to find out is that they're not available to a lot of people right now. And when I say small business that we work with, small to the five to 10 employees maximum. A challenge that I think is universal when we go to lease to a tenant and there's things that they need to do, those dollars just aren't available. Our typical tenant is very entrepreneurial, but they just don't qualify for any SBA loans or funding. So many times what NDC does is we do those initial improvements for that tenant, and then we amortize those improvements into their lease for the life of their lease at 0% interest. So that is one thing that we do. It's an opportunity that we also see on the outside of being able to identify another possible funder to assist with that.
Now, has the, I'm just trying to remember between NDC and FC, the trust fund, does the county's-
County puts money into NFC about-
The finance corporation, I believe. But we don't receive. At the beginning of the start of Neighborhood Development Corporation, I believe there was seed money from DMDC, the old DMDC, and Polk County. And there has been in the past contributions, prior to me, from Polk County on specific projects, but we do not currently hold-
A 28E?
A 28E with Polk County. We have been successful at addressing the challenges. We've located a local bank that will lend to us, and I continue to work in extending educational efforts with other local banks to broaden our lending pool. We're foregoing some residential incentives from an affordable housing aspect in order to realize full leasing potential. And we're just adjusting to the new commercial market rates like other developers. It's not a huge adjustment for us. We never had super-high leases, but we're just being able to hold those and maybe make some additional changes in how we lease and our leasing rates in order to give people a jumpstart at the beginning. Just, the 28E agreement, it does limit our ability to obtain future project funding, and I talked about this, Christine, with the cross-collateralization and different financial securities that we've had to place in order to receive funding. We do have a constant evaluation of our operating costs. There's one of me. I'm currently the only staff member at Neighborhood Development Corporation, so I do it all. But we do have a second, and our second left to take a different position, but we are currently hiring for a second. So the two of us, and we have outside groups that we work with in order to keep our operating costs very, very low, we have reduced those costs about 35% in the last 16 months. So we are very, and our board is very helpful in identifying any of those that I don't catch. And once again, we collaborate with private organizations to determine feasibility of new ways to lend to non-traditional business startups. I want to finalize this. Where we're going, we're going to finalize the construction and financing for our new building. We're going to continue to work with city leadership and staff on identifying areas where NDC can play a role in redevelopment. One notation I want to make there is that we do work with Community Development Department and other departments, but anytime a council member wants, Councilman Meyer has come to me prior to his board service even, and said, "Can you take a look at this parcel? Does NDC play a role?" We are more than happy to bet any ways that you can give me a call and say, "Can we sit down and talk about this? Does NDC play a role there?" We will continue to update our strategic plan. We'll work in conjunction with the Neighborhood Revitalization Program in order to identify future opportunities, and we will continue to identify development partners to leverage development dollars. And we are obviously keeping in touch with all the other planning efforts going on with the capital crossroads, the tomorrow's plans, and just sitting down and listening to identify whether or not we have a role there as well. And that is a list of our current board members.
Heidi?
Yes?
One thing that we've talked about, and I don't know, maybe I'll throw this to the City Manager, as far as the Hillside property, the Southeast 6th property, what we really need, and quickly, is that to be included in that enterprise zone down there. Do you know how far along we are in that?
I sat down with Rita- I sat down with Rita Connor in Department of Economic Development, and we are, the line for the enterprise zone is literally the street next to us. So, when, I think that when that was re-looked at for Mr. Morrow's project, it was included in that enterprise zone, but just stopped short. So, we are-
I mean, the short answer is we'll take a look at it, Brian and Heidi, and I'm not sure I can put Terry on the spot right now, but there are state constraints in terms of how much area you can have within an enterprise zone district. And it might be that we have enough capacity left to add-
Correct.
A block or two. So, we'll definitely look at it, and if we can do it, we'll try to do it.
Thank you.
Unless, Terry, can you add more to it than that?
The enterprise zones have to follow some structure, so that will be a determinant
What other questions can I answer for you?
Again, appreciate the update.
Anytime. My phone's always right next to me, so if you have any other questions, please let me know, and I will follow up with your before and after on the tax questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there somebody on the phone?
Mr. Coleman.
I'm on the phone.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, Phil Delafield, Community Development Department. I'm here once again for the tax abatement program. Your agenda says residential tax abatement. Actually, this is the entire residential and commercial tax abatement, so just by way of clarification. Also, by way of reminder, we have been in front of you two times prior. We have heard your input. We continue to recognize the importance of this issue and have worked hard to answer your questions. I want to highlight a few key elements here today and also emphasize the timing importance of this issue. As I said earlier, your input, prior input, has been incorporated into this. And just to bring this full circle on tonight's agenda, it will be an action item that will essentially tee up and launch these steps that are outlined in this program. So, with that, I'll get started. The goal of the tax abatement program originally was to incentivize new development. It remains a goal. It's there to support neighborhoods, encourage development, and the reuse of existing buildings. There has been many questions, there have been many questions regarding the ability of this program to help infill new development. We believe that the program that we're setting forth before you will enable us to do that. There are a number of changing goals that have occurred during this program leading up to today. Not only did we want to incentivize new development, but we also needed to bolster the neighborhoods and be competitive with the suburbs and increase the quality of the developments that we were seeing. That may also change as the Green Construction Code comes online, and we would want to take another look at that and see how appropriate it would be for our efforts. This is the importance factor here. The program currently expires on December 31, 2011, and we need to have our program updated by that time. It would be very, very difficult to establish a new program if we were to allow it to expire. These are the limitations of the program. We titled it "State Law." It must be available for a defined group, and you see the points outlined there. Commercial rehabilitation is eligible with criteria the same as all projects. All residential construction is eligible, and we are not able to set different tax abatement levels for meeting different standards within a plan. You asked us the question at the prior meeting, what are the suburbs doing? And this is just an overview of what is currently in place for the suburbs. You see there mostly the eastern suburbs and a variety of plans, some large and some You also asked us, what are the boundaries of the downtown area and north of I-2, excuse me, south of I-235, north of the rivers, east of MLK, and west of East 14th, and the area is outlined in red. And these are our current existing commercial schedules, three-year, 100% or 10-year declining. And this is our proposed commercial. We suggest to you that we exclude the downtown area from the program, and as projects come online, we amend the plan for specific projects. We suggest that they comply with the new design guidelines, and we use other incentives targeted to the project.
You might recall, this is a really key point, because if you make it a matter of right, then if you consider major developments that walk in the door, you basically start with the point that they've already got abatement, and then they want something on top of that. So, doing it this way doesn't mean we won't do abatement, but you'll have the option of making that decision on a case-by-case basis, and you can claim credit for that abatement as part of your overall package. Otherwise, you basically throw them the hopper before you even start negotiations.
Can you talk a little bit about the transition plan then on this? Those individuals that we've committed to are certainly-
Right. If you've made commitments, we'll make sure that those commitments follow through.
Even though the construction has not?
Yes. A good example would be, I think, Terry, on the Fleming Building tonight, there's an example that, this doesn't exist today, but we're saying that if you do that way, then you would basically make the 10-year abatement available. And there's other examples like that. So, we're trying to be very mindful of that fact, that if we've made commitments, if councils made commitments rather, then those have to follow through.
Rick? There's a lot of projects out there where we don't have an application, or there's not been a permit taken out yet. At what stage in the process would, you know, Christine's question be in effect? I mean, we don't want everything out there that's been talked about.
Mr. Coleman, if I may answer, the answer to that would be that the program in place at the time of application would be the applicable program.
All right. So, what is the schedule for making this, putting this in place, if you will?
It'd be by the end of the year.
January 1?
Assuming council approves it, of course. That's, the plan is that these actions would be in place by the end, before the end of this year, calendar year.
That's correct.
Okay.
What was your point, Terry?
It expires by December 31st.
Right.
I'm sorry. That's correct.
The other aspect here is that there's two separate, keep in mind as you go through the presentation, there are two separate commercial. When we talk about commercial projects, there is the urban revitalization, three-year, 100% 10-year declining, which is being discussed as not being available in the downtown area. Then there is commercial residential, which is on your slide that you're looking at right now, that is being proposed. So, some of the projects that we have going forward right now are commercial residential projects as opposed to commercial office projects.
And that means like apartments?
Correct. Multi-family housing would be considered commercial residential, which is on the, which would be included on the screen, on the 10-year 100% in the downtown area, is being discussed. So, it's a differential when we talk about commercial property between what's available for a new construction or renovation on an office project versus what's available for a new construction or renovation on a commercial residential multi-family project.
Thank you, Terry. This is our existing commercial, or excuse me, residential downtown. You see in the yellow area, an area that has, was excluded when the market was in a different situation. And our proposal is to add that back in. So, this is the downtown residential proposed, where we have the 10-year 100%. These are our commercial abatement schedule, the current program, three-year, 100% or 10-year declining. I want to point out that there, as we've made the point in prior meetings, there are a lot of different plans that were put in place in different regions. It was difficult to administer. It was difficult to anticipate what was required on the development side. So, our proposal is to extend tax abatement to all commercial and industrial zoning districts. So, many more areas, this goes to the point that we are trying to incentivize that neighborhood development in those areas that have not prior had the ability to use commercial development. We also propose to reduce the number and complexities of the current plan. So, one set of standards for all categories, and we believe this supports your goal of supporting neighborhood commercial uses. So, this is a map of the areas that would essentially be eligible for the tax abatement program. And again, we are using the zoning map to control where it's available. If it's allowed commercial or industrial use, the zoning map would allow that use, then it would be eligible for tax payment. This is a summary of where we are. It allows us, of where our proposal is, it allows citywide outside the downtown area, outside the downtown area by zoning, and it sets design requirements for granting of abatement. And again, we're trying to raise the quality of the design as well as incentivize. So, that raising the quality of the design would essentially, you see outlined here, comply with the site plan standards and the applicable landscape standards, doing some work on the public sidewalks where appropriate, upgraded exterior building finishes, a number of issues there, monuments, signs. And the last point there I want to make is important, because we believe sustainability is also an important piece of this. We would like to include some sustainability options. I've outlined this to you before. You choose four of these features to whichever is most beneficial to your project, but we would suggest that four of these would be the appropriate amount. This would be sort of an interim step until the Green Construction Code is ready. And as that comes online, we would suggest replacing this with whatever recommendations come out of the Green Construction Code. And you'll recall that that can be tailored to our community, so we can support the goals that we wish and cut out the pieces that are inappropriate for our area. Commercial rehabilitation, again, the goal to encourage small business in the neighborhoods. And these are the schedules that are existing. Again, this is the citywide, three-year, 100% or 10-year declining in defined areas. And this is the proposal, create citywide non-residential standards, three-year 100% or 10-year declining tied to the landscape standards and other elements that would improve it. This is the current citywide residential abatement, a five-year 100%, a 10-year 100% in targeted areas, and a 10-year 115% for $20,000 value or less. And this is our residential proposal, retain the five-year 100% tax abatement or create a 10-year 100% declining, reinstate the 10-year 100% throughout downtown, and expand the 10-year 100% abatement into existing urban renewal areas.
Phil, you might just, on that very first bullet, the 10-year 100% declining for residential is sort of a new wrinkle, isn't it?
It's a new wrinkle, and there are options there. Depending on how you structure the declining rate, then you can, we believe that the five-year program as it sits right now has advantage to the tax holder. There are disadvantages in that it dies all at once and it comes online. So, it's possible to put in place a 10-year declining, and depending on how you structure it, it may or may not be advantageous, more advantageous than the five-year plan. If you were to do it, Scott, maybe you can clarify these points for me. If you were to do it, I believe 90, 80, 70, 60, it would have more advantage to the owner.
Correct. If they started with the 100% in the first year and then declined by 10% a year, 90, 80, 70, it'd be equivalent to about five and a half years of total abatement. And what you have then is a smoothing effect for the taxpayer and the bank for that matter, as far as what the escrow needs to be each year coming in over a phased period. So, quite honestly, you may have less of these issues on the sixth year when everything comes to it once, and you have the stress of the extra payments.
So, the declining, the 100% declining then, there are not options? It would automate, or does the property owner have options? Maybe they want to do it on a different schedule?
It'd be a fixed schedule.
It's a fixed schedule? So, there's no, they don't have any choice?
But there may be the two options, either the five-year or the 10-year declining.
Right, right. Okay. Yeah. Okay.
Thank you, Scott.
But one of the criticisms that we've had, and I guess Scott and Phil have touched on it, is you have people who, when the abatement, the five-year abatement runs off, then they go from no taxes to a lot of taxes, and it's really hard for a lot of people to consume that. And so, this is a way to address that, allows the gradual introduction of tax payment. And the fiscal impact on the city is about a wash. So, what's suggested here, if you want to do it, is to give people the option of going either way.
And would the city, and I'm just trying to think back, would the City of Des Moines be the only municipality within the area that has the 10-year declining for residential?
Yes, I believe that's true.
Okay.
Scott, you looked at that? Yeah. This is the existing, I mean, I'm sorry, this is the proposed residential rehabilitation. These are those projects, less than $20,000. We suggest that we will want to retain that. And we suggest also extending it through 2016. This number is convenient for us. It can be reevaluated prior to that if market changes or if there are changing elements. For example, if the construction, Green Construction Code becomes available and we decide to go forward with that, we can make amendments, much in the same way with that we propose to amend the downtown plan areas. So, here's the summary of the green elements, changing market conditions, and in conjunction, of course, with the state code, which has very important bearing. If valuation rates change for commercial properties, for example, we may want to reevaluate this issue. So, these are our recommended actions, amend the residential from areas where, excluding rehabilitation where zoning does not allow residential, amend the commercial new construction, and add the design guidelines, and amend the commercial rehab abatement to comply with the landscaping standards. So, here's our recommended actions, and this is what is on the council agenda tonight. This is our summary, and if you approve the action tonight, this will launch these steps.
Phil, in terms of the action tonight, could you clarify, there's a whole series of actions that council will need to take. So, tonight's sort of like the kickoff, but there's still time to review and provide input during that period of time.
Very many decision points for you to come yet, and those items include council hearings, plan and zoning hearings. You'll have to amend the urban revitalization plan and so forth. So, there are a number of steps that are occurring. And we have it timed out that we can have the whole plan in front of you for final approval by the first meeting in December. Is that the fifth, I believe, somewhere in that neighborhood? So, it's very important that we keep to the schedule and not miss a step here.
And the 2016 now, you made reference to that as if that's longer than typical? Isn't it five years?
Last, it's five years. The last time we changed it was three years ago, and that's when we made the downtown area, took the 100% out of the downtown area. It's a number of conveniences all, and it's sort of the pattern that we had with extensions prior to that downtown.
Council wanted a different number.
We could use a different number if you wanted.
Okay. Thank you.
Phil, let me ask you a question. If, I'm assuming that we can amend this as time goes along, if certain circumstances present themselves, that something changes, like up on the hill-
Absolutely.
Behind you that would adversely affect revenue to the city?
Yes, yes. This matter can be brought back in front of you, and we can change the plans.
Okay.
All right.
Phil, when you recommend actions, exclude rehabilitation areas where residential occupancy is not allowed, is that areas like floodplains?
Those areas like floodplains and areas where zoning prohibits residential development. You don't want to incentivize an area with illegal, non-conforming use, for example, or where residential, like the floodplains, where just residential development is not desired.
Thank you.
So, this goes to Rick's question, what are the steps? This is an outline of the steps that are necessary to bring this to you December 5th. And that concludes my presentation. Are there additional questions?
Very good.
Thank you. On the 10-year declining, it would be helpful to have an understanding of if you'd like that put in place as an option.
I like that option, as long as there's not a financial impact. And it sounds like it's very minimal if any financial impact-
Correct.
Yeah. I like the options.
If we would actually define it so there wasn't any, I think we have some latitude, because you can create a schedule.
That's correct.
So, that would be the goal, would be to make it essentially dollar equivalent.
Correct. All right. Thank you very much.
Just go ahead. Move on. We're going to talk about the budget.
Mayor, Members of the Council, Al McKinley, Deputy City Manager-
Mayor, Members of Council, Alan McKinley, Deputy City Manager. We are once again at the time of the year when we initiate a budget process for adoption of, in this case, the 2013 budget. But as was done in the past, a few years ago, council looked at actually preparing a two-year budget plan, and so that's what's being proposed this year. There's been some information released within the organization, I believe you're aware of, that talked about what our challenge is in order to accomplish that. This will probably be, this is a transition year where I have stood before you for many years, talking about budgets and the details of them. As a deputy city manager now, I do have the finance department reporting to me, and Scott Sanders, as you know, is the finance director and has a great amount of experience in his positions he's held in West Des Moines and Council Bluffs and in the private sector as well. And so Scott is leading the charge with the research and budget office, as is typically done, but I'm also continuing to have my fingers involved in the process as well. Scott's here to walk you through the, kind of the kickoff of our budget process and to get the input and feedback from you all.
Thank you, Alan. Morning, Mayor, council members. Scott Sanders, Finance Director. Okay, well, Alan did a great job kicking us off. This is the first workshop of several that we will have on the budget. And again, it is a two-year plan that we are going to resolve with the budget, and we will submit to the state the first year for the 2013 fiscal year. I think before we get too far ahead into the fiscal years 13, 14, it'd make a lot of sense to look back at the last cycle that was completed. Alan mentioned that it was a two-year budget plan, and back in 2010, the city was faced with a situation with expenses growing about 4.5% a year, that you see in the red line at the top, and revenues growing at about 2% a year, which essentially leaves a gap of funding of several million dollars a year growing over time. And this is not unusual for city governments across Iowa as well as the country, for that matter. The city did a great job of meeting that challenge of the budget two years ago, and put on here some of the impacts and some of the changes that were made. Primarily, the budgets were balanced, and the city was able to maintain its tax rate. It was a very transparent process with a lot of public input. We fully intend to continue that. $24 million in operating expenditures were reduced, that's actually over the last five years, and 131 full-time positions. There were cooperative agreements sought out, and the employee groups were participatory in keeping the cost of wages and salaries at a modest increase as well. So what are the current challenges that we're looking at in this cycle of the two-year budget plan? Well, we have a loss in commercial and residential valuations, which you've probably already heard about, publicized. We're looking at 28% losses in commercial values downtown and over 3% loss citywide. I'll have more details on that in a slide to come up. We've heard a lot and had to respond about commercial rollback proposals from the state, both the governor's office and both the House and the Senate. Employee costs continue to have pressure, the need to, again, increase employee wages at a modest amount. The pension systems suffered pretty significant investment losses in 2008, 2009, and because of the way those systems work, the contribution rates from employers, the cities, is smoothed out over five years. And so we are still impacted by the loss back in 2008, both on the 411 pension system, that's the police and fire pension, as well as IFRS. There are increases in contributions expected over the foreseeable future in both those plans. You've heard a little bit about the potential loss of federal funding. We need to monitor that very closely. We do not have final answers on what the 2013 budget will be at this point. The parking system is linked to the commercial office space challenge in that with the vacancies, the parking system is also suffering losses in revenues. You may be familiar with the ADA settlement costs and the requirements that the city has for our public facilities due to ADA requirements, as well as sidewalk issues that need to be resolved. And that's a fairly expensive venture. And then lastly, the flood protection requirements with the levy systems. So this first discussion this morning, we thought it would be appropriate to focus on the operating budget. And in reality, when we submit our, our budget to the state, there are a lot of elements to that that include things that you see there, the capital and the debt service, as well as special revenue and enterprise funds such as the utilities. But for today, we wanted to focus on the general operating fund, which is about 165 million of annual revenues and expenses. It represents about 27% of the total budget that will get submitted. So this is where the finance department kicks in with our expertise in projecting revenues and expenses. So what exactly is the calculation of the gap for the two-year period? We need to start with a couple of assumptions. First of which is that we're not looking at any new revenue sources, and what if the rates were to remain the same, both tax rates and fees? We also need to look at providing the same service with the same staff at all possible. So given those assumptions, our starting point with our projections, we see that the valuations, the property valuations, which drive the property taxes are actually decreasing for fiscal year 2013, and I'll show you some more detail on that in the next couple of slides. And then, of course, the expenditures, both personnel-related, commodities, supplies and services, continue to trend upwards with inflationary increases. So what about those revenue projections? I mentioned that overall, for the January 1, 2011 values, those, those will drop for the city of Des Moines, and those are payable for fiscal year 13. So that's the first year of the budget cycle that we're, we're starting out with the planning. There, there is anticipated to be small increases for the following year, January 1 of '12, which is payable fiscal year 14. And I mentioned the 28% reduction is, is the driving force, if you will, in the commercial property loss. For the most part, the other revenue streams are showing either flat projections or very small growth at 1% or 2%. Thought it might be valuable to show you an example of downtown area. We captured the 10 largest commercial properties in downtown, added those up, and you'll see on the left there, 347 million in valuation if you go back to the January 1, 2009. That 2009 valuation drove the budget 2010, '11. And the assessors, the county assessors are asked to revalue all property every two years. That's why you see, I show the comparison to 2011. And there was a $65 million loss of valuation with those assessor-based revaluing, down to the 282 million. Probably more importantly, what does that mean for tax dollars on the right? Those same losses in values amount to over $1 million of lost revenue annually to the city. That's just the city's portion. The school district and county would also lose their portions of those taxes.
Scott, these are, these are just for the 10 largest properties. So when you expand it to the city as a whole, of course, the numbers are significantly greater, right?
Exactly. And in fact, the magnitude is about three times that size when you look at the entire city of all classes of property. Any questions? Okay, so if we jump over to the expenditure side, I've mentioned this already, that we, we continue to have salary and wage modest increases in our projections. The idea there being, we have current contracts with some of the bargaining units that go out into 20, fiscal year 2013, and the idea is that we would keep the salaries and wages consistent with that. And that's a 1.75% increase for 2013. That's the, across the board, or the cost of living, if you will. The pension rates, I touched on this briefly, but to give you some more figures to look at, the IFRS pension, the civilian side of this, we're looking at 10% to 12% increases in what the city needs to contribute to that system. The 411, which is again the police and fire system, we're looking at 15% to 17% increases over the current year for the contributions that we need to put in. The healthcare costs, there is some good news here. The city's decision to move to self-funding health insurance avoided a premium increase. We were looking at about 8% premiums if we'd stayed with the old system. But because the city decided, with your guidance as well, to move to a self-funded system, we're looking at flat healthcare costs for 2013. So we're looking at no increase while no decrease. And then a smaller increase of about 6% for the fiscal year 14 and the following year.
The numbers that you're referring to, is that for the two-year budget, or is that referring to two-year, every year annually?
The first of the two years would be flat, and the second year would be 6% increase.
Okay. But the, the 8% that you were looking at was an annual increase or the two-year increase?
Just the one-year increase in, in the second year. So if you average over the two years, it'd be 3%, or a little more.
But you have, you have those savings that, that occurred by going self-insured, continue on. It's just that your rate of, but you have to apply a rate of increase on top of that as well. Since your rate of increase is applied to a smaller base, so there is the ongoing effect of that decision that, that does benefit us in the future.
Right. But I'm just trying to sort out, I thought we were talking about a two-year budget here, and so I'm just trying to sort out exactly what you're talking about, whether we're talking about a two-year cumulative number or you're talking about 8% on the old plan per year increase?
No, no. The, we're looking at 0% the first year and 6% the second.
On health insurance.
On hea, only health insurance.
Under the old plan or under the current plan?
Under the current plan. So we, we have, the city has hit the reset button, if you will, on the cost of health, health insurance, moving from 2011 to the current year, 2012. And then we're looking to keep that flat on the cost for 2013, and then increase 6% from there. I'm missing the mark?
No. Since I was involved with HR in the health insurance, self-insurance proposal back in May, typically, we would be projecting an 8% increase in FY '13 and then in FY '14 over our current expenses in FY '12. The decision to move to self-insured meant that in FY '13, there will be no insurance premium increase anticipated, and then the year following will be 6%. So before, had we not done this, but it went in 8% and another 8% on top of that, now we're looking at 0 and 6.
And that's with increases in, in use or not, our new wellness program, we're going to lower the-
There were a couple of actions taken. One was excess insurance premium loss. We raised, if you remember, we raised the amount that was previously 175,000, James ran it somewhere? 175, and it moved to?
125.
125?
300.
300 to 125. And then, of course, as always, which helps lower our, our premium cost. And then just the savings of moving from an insured program with the size of our employee
The thing I think I was just trying to sort out, so that everybody's clear, is whether we're talking about a per annum or over that 24-month, two-year cycle. And so you, I think, straightened it out in this case.
Roughly, except for-
If we work through this, sometimes it's hard to-
Right.
With the way you're testifying, so to speak, sort out what you're talking about.
Okay. Any other questions on the health insurance? And then just lastly, the fuel purchases continue to be a pressure on the budget as well. We're looking at 6% increases as a projection there annually each year.
And that's factoring in the, the use of electric vehicles?
Yes, because it's such a small, small fraction at this point, yes.
Thank you very much.
Right answer.
Yes. And so the punchline, if you will, and sometimes it feels like a punch, $7.7 million is the gap that needs to be resolved.
And that is a little over 3.75, whatever it is, percent-
Of the total.
Per year.
Correct. Just three, eh, a little bit less than that, but yes, that's pretty close.
Okay.
And this is the-
But what we do, though, understand is, we, the gap is 7.7 million in fiscal year 14, the second year. So we try and resolve all of that in the next, you know, six to nine months.
So this is the net gap, because, and you talked about the, the expenses and the assumptions that were used to arrive at this dollar amount?
Yes. Both revenues and expenses are factored in.
And the one, the one item I didn't hear you talk about on the revenue side was then the rollback for residential. Did that actually, that went up, so?
That's correct. And that's factored into this as well.
Okay. And what was that, do we know what that dollar amount was?
No, and in fact, that's where you rely on our expertise to, to talk with people and understand where that's moving. The final rollback will not be shared until late October, early November.
Okay.
But all the variables that go into calculating the rollback are very public. We've dissected those and have pretty good projections for the rollback, which will continue to increase. So there is a little bit of a shining light there on the revenue side.
Okay.
Scott, do you know off the top of your head what the one-year budget gap is?
Yes, you'll see that. We've got a couple of different ways to display for you what the 7.7 looks like. And so the first of which is, is a, a graph showing that the first two years, that red solid line is fiscal year 11 and 12, and those are balanced budgets where essentially the revenues match the expenditures. The challenge, if you will, starts in 2013, and that's where the two lines diverge, and they widen out a little further in 2014. And so you'll see at the bottom where the fiscal year 13 projection, right above that is the 5.5 million figure. That answers your question. Is, in the first year of our budget plan, it's about a $5.5 million deficit or gap. And then in the second year, it grows to the 7.7 amount. Essentially, that kind of explains this in a more graphical illustration? Any questions on the, on the graph? The other way to show this, then, is tabular. Looking at a table with the different elements, you can see, and this is, is a strong talking point, in that revenue projection in the current year, 165 million, it drops to 161 million, and then recovers back to the 165. On the expenditure side, you'll see we've got the different elements I've spoken about, adding up to 164 in the current year roughly, and then growing to 172.7 in the second year budget plan that we're, that we're working on. So that's just another way of showing, or illustrating the same, same information.
Scott, it's worth pointing out that all the numbers here assume status quo in terms of legislation. So any additional legislation, pro or con, would impact these numbers perhaps significantly.
That's exactly right.
And based upon the fact that the budget has to be certified March 15th or 7th, or whatever that date is, obviously, we're hopeful that we'll have some relief in a few of these areas that would potentially go into effect July 1st.
Relief in?
Whether it's with 411, IFRS, I mean, there are just lots of different scenarios.
Sure. And so this, this takes the existing law. And what we have are actuarial studies with the pension funds that give us confidence that with no change- funds that give us confidence that with no changes legislatively, this will be the impact.
But your question, Christine, is appropriate, because it depends what, if changes are made in pension contributions, for example.
And we've already certified the budget, and, you know, it could very well happen in April as opposed to?
It might be, and then you would, depending on what they do, you could be in a world of hurt, depending on exactly how it's done. It's possible they would set effective dates for 2014, then you'd have a year to make those corrections or amendments to it. But yes, there is that risk point that you have to certify before legislation might be finally resolved, and that can be, that can put us in a very difficult position if you have to go back and make changes on a budget that's already been certified.
Okay. So the challenge is the 7.7 million. Moving forward, we have some guiding principles. You've actually seen these in years past. We are doing a two-year budget plan. Obviously, we're trying to minimize service impacts to the citizens. If there is cuts necessary, which clearly with the 7.7, that's where we're headed. The service impacts need to be fully explained, embedded with the departments. We're looking for sustainable actions with reoccurring savings. We're not looking for one-time gimmicks that are only one-time savings. We look to attempt to maintain the frontline employees, conservative financial projections, and then clearly, we want to engage the public throughout this process, and then seek out collaborations. Those collaborations could be with other cities, county, the state, schools, and even private-public interactions as well.
On the seek-out other collaborations, Scott, do we have discussions going currently? I think we've had, we've begun some discussions with the state, or maybe it's continuation?
This is Hensley, councilmembers. Both Mayor, County, and you, I think, as well, and perhaps others, have mentioned to us the possibility of looking at fleet savings. So we've had initial meetings with the State Department of Administrative Services along those lines, and that work is ongoing right now. I don't know where it's going to end, but we have engaged those conversations at your suggestion, and so hopefully, we can get some benefit out of them.
Well, you have continuing negotiations or conversations, always looking at airport, always, and now currently in discussions with waterworks, and hopefully with our friends in contiguous communities.
Yeah, you're correct, Mayor. And it's on a lot of different fronts that you all have exerted great leadership on, and hopefully, some of those things can prove beneficial in terms of the bottom line of our budget. But yeah, there's a lot of fronts going on there.
I guess the reason I just asked that question is, is that I think it's critical that we move it, and we're proactive in pushing it at this particular point, because I'd rather have it have an impact now on this upcoming budget cycle, and I think it would be to their benefit as well. So we're in the, I guess, in my view, we're in the crunch time.
I would agree, and it is a high priority for us, and, you know, it's one way that maybe we can preserve services and reduce cost at the same time, and I think that's what you're, I think that's your message back to us, and we understand that and are going to pursue it aggressively as we know how. It takes two to tango. You can't do things unilaterally, but hopefully, if the other side has some willingness, we can make some progress.
The other item I just would ask, whether or not it should be part of the guiding principles, would be the whole capital crossroads and all that discussion that's going on right now? I mean, there clearly are some significant recommendations in there that might assist us as we're talking about these collaborations.
We will. We'll take a look at that.
Okay. Great comments. So the budget process that we're looking at, additional workshops, probably all the way through finalizing the budget in February, but we want to pretty quickly get the public input through several different methods, both on the webpage and the continuance of, what I understand to be successful town hall meetings in the past. We're looking to try and get those, establish the dates and venues and whatnot, pretty quickly here for the month of October.
Our goal in those town hall meetings would be to have some dates established. We can't give them to you this morning, but hopefully, within a week or so, we'll have some dates, and these will have to all be embedded with you. I want to make sure the dates work for all of you and are convenient for you to attend those, and we'll be talking to you more about details and all the things that go into that. But it's important, really important, that we get this public input process cranked up sooner rather than later. You don't want to go through your whole budget process and then ask the public what they think. You want to do that, that public engagement at the front end, and so that's what we're attempting to do.
What I would suggest, and I know that we did have the public input in town hall meetings two years ago, which I thought were very effective, but it might be appropriate to also have a midterm, not, maybe not all of the same town meetings, but have a central location for a midterm discussion with the public after we've had a chance to really look at, and we've had some recommendations where we're getting something more concrete that we're going to be moving forward, just to give them an opportunity. Because I think many times, and I think you've said it, Rick, that you get to a point where it's, you know, it just picks up steam and it's rolling forward. So I'd like to see us add a mid-budget?
Sure.
Town hall meeting as well.
I think it's a great point. So at the front end, we're really asking for input. The midterm you're talking about is sort of when we develop some ideas, and you've given us a sense of where you want to go.
Correct.
You're suggesting that we go out on the road with that and say, here's what we're talking about, and provide another opportunity?
Correct.
In that midterm range for public to provide input. It's a great idea, and we can build that into the process.
Well, in addition, depending on how we define midterm, it might be a year from now, we'd want to update people, because it's always a dynamic situation, ever-changing, and we may be better or worse off a year from now than we anticipated.
True point. And we can certainly build that into the process to do a second, a second-year review, which is a great point, Mayor, because all of the numbers that Scott's laid out for you, these are, these are projections. And as you all know, when you project forward two years, let alone three years or four years, there's always room for changes. And frankly, I think there is a very distinct possibility of legislative action. So, you know, we're going to proceed forward with all the positive thoughts that we can, that we can do this in a two-year cycle with the numbers we've got, but I think it would be very prudent for us to have the idea that there's likely to be some changes. So your point, Mayor, I think is appropriate, particularly in that regard.
I would just like to add that I know last time on the town hall meetings, we typically had them late afternoon, early evening, that we consider at least one meeting downtown over the lunch hour, because you do have a lot of people that would come to the Central Library. Those have done very, very well when we've had other public meetings on other topics with other groups, so?
It's a great point.
If we could just maybe do one at lunch, and, you know, maybe even look over in the East Village, maybe do one in the East Village and one in the core downtown, or you could do it at the State Historical Building or something over there. So I just think that we might get a different?
I think, I think?
That's a great idea.
I think diversity in location is important and access to people, so I like the idea of downtown and East Village.
Great idea. That's great, that's great.
Lastly, the target would be to have the budget strategy, if you will, resolved by December. There'd be quite a bit of paperwork that needs to get done in January as far as the exact numbers, so we need to know what those cuts and what the strategy is in December.
So to your point a moment ago, Christine, if the goal is to have the budget strategy resolved in December, that means that midterm kind of discussion with the public might occur just right before that?
Correct. Yes, maybe the first part of December, right after Thanksgiving, might be a good time.
Yeah, good. Okay. Any other questions?
I know that, this is Chris, I know that we've got plenty of heavy lifting to do, and it'll be a monumental task alone, but I do think, given the kinds of things that the state legislature has talked about the last, you know, couple sessions, that would weaken our position, it's really important that we stay on our schedule or even bump it up. When we can talk about the things that we have to do already this coming fiscal year to balance our budget, it strengthens our hands, you know, politically and legislatively on efforts that might be made to weaken our hands. So I would advocate getting at our budget as soon as possible in, you know, no later than February this year. I know we have until March 15th, but I think the sooner we can ratify our budget, it gives us a position of strength at the Hill to say that there, you know, there are change in the rules in the middle of the game.
Chris, we can, we can try to do that. I also think a goal of having your basic budget strategy resolved in December, that's a point at time where you would be saying, as a matter of policy, this is, these are the actions we're going to take to balance the budget. That will also be important for that discussion as well, and I think will send a fairly strong message to the world, frankly, about the kind of actions that you're going to be required to take. And that does have a bearing on the legislative discussion, in my view. So that kind of input will be out there, will be public, hopefully, before the end of the year in December. Thank you.
Very good.
Okay. Any other comments, questions, thoughts, counsel? Why don't we open it up for public comment if anybody has anything from the audience this morning? We would appreciate your input at this time. Looks like nobody's jumping up immediately, so I thank you all for coming this morning, and for those of you who have interest, we'll see you this evening. This meeting's adjourned.